I'm one of the school of thousands. How can you say that you're superintendent of thousands and thousands of kids? Yeah. Thousands of kids, that's tiny. Five days' school.
Let's call this regular monthly board meeting Tuesday, December 16th to order. We'll ask Superintendent Votche to lead us in prayer. Mr. Egan, would you lead us in the pledge?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for what has been a very smooth first semester for our schools and ask that you guide us into the new year with a renewed enthusiasm for teaching and learning. As we look forward to our Christmas break, we ask that you keep our school system family safe from harm. Bless each one and allow them moments to rest, enjoy time with family and friends, and remember the significance of the season. Thank you for the blessings you continue to bring to our school district and thank you for the blessings we have experienced in our individual lives. These things we pray in your name.
Amen. Ms. Egan?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent Votche, would you call the robe, please?
Mrs. Acevedo? Here. Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mrs. DeFatta is not with us. Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mrs. Daisar?
Here.
Dr. Crag?
Here.
Dr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Long is not with us. Mr. Makoshia?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Okay. Ms. Ben-Zach, do we have anyone for community concerns from the audience?
No, sir. Dr. Crag?
Oh, I'm sorry. Soon as she lets us know that, we'll go ahead. Recognize Ms. Dossard for her personal privilege. Do we have someone?
No, we didn't.
Okay. So, go ahead, Ms. Dossard for her personal privilege.
Thank you, Dr. Crag. Yes, I'd just like to take this opportunity to congratulate and also to commend Chalmette High School for putting on such a wonderful performance last Thursday and Friday. They did a beautiful musical variety show and from the musicians to the dancers to the singers, the costumes, the props, the lighting, it was just first class and it was, you know, four none, better than a Broadway show, I thought, and it was all done by our students with, of course, the supervision of, you know, our teachers, Mr. Rossk, band director, and Mr. Kerr, Mr. Kassar, Ms. Kassar, both Mrs. Kassar who
Ms. and Mrs.
both took place.
Mitchell.
And Ms. Mitchell with the Charmers. I mean, it was just absolutely fabulous and if no one has had the opportunity to go to the Chalmette Cultural Arts Center for any of the performances, please do so. It's just, it's a wonderful thing and our students are just so talented. It really is something to be proud of for our students to do so well. And Ms. Votche, I know you, Mr. Warner, everyone, you know, helped with it with Mr. Carey and we even had Santa Claus come out for the little children who participated and it was just absolutely wonderful. So, congratulations and y'all did a great job. Keep up the great work. Make saving on community members and school board members and everyone, so proud of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dossard.
And if I could just add too, as you mentioned, Ms. Daisar, Mr. Carey was there representing the Chalmette High School Cultural Arts Foundation, which he endowed, and each year at that time, they present a check on the interest earned on the funds in the foundation for that year. And he presented a check for $44,000 to continue these cultural arts presentations over the course of the year in the high school. So, it's a wonderful foundation if anyone wishes to get involved in it or make donations to it, but it keeps the arts alive within the school system and it is just a wonderful, wonderful organization because we could not put on the productions that we do without that funding that we get from his foundation as well as the Merrill Foundation and some other very generous benefactors within St. Bernard Parish.
Yes. Thank you, Superintendent Votche. It was truly a class act and it makes us proud. I keep thinking that they can't get any better, but they keep getting better and better and they make us all proud with the talents they display in these productions and we appreciate all of those that had unique parts and the number of people that had so many parts in making this come about and being a success. We'll move to, do we have anyone else that would like to say relative to the production Thursday and Friday night? Okay, we'll move, we'll move on to item five, update of the Battle of New Orleans Bicentennial. Okay, Mr. Charles Kassar, you're on.
Good evening, everybody. And in Ms. Votche's prayer, it was a perfect segue into this, in her prayer for enthusiasm toward teaching and learning. And what a better way to do that than this epic opportunity that exists within our own community to celebrate some of the most important real estate, truly the most important battle ever fought on American soil because it determined the destiny of America. It determined the destiny of a young, of a young nation. And for so long, our community has not celebrated, Mr. Campbell, all right, have, just have not celebrated the magnitude of what the battleground and that battle has afforded us both as a community, as a state, and ultimately as a nation, and then eventually to become a world power. We hope through this set of experiences, this wonderful bicentennial experience, to bring our community and especially our school community to a place to begin to better understand this big event, to truly understand the man for whom our community of Chalmette and the high school was named, the first American hero in the Battle of New Orleans. It was, it was perplexing when we opened the Founder's Room and there were, there was the picture of Chalmette's mother and Chalmette's stepfather and public officials came in and said, "Chalmette's a real person?" So, the, the story really began there and there are multiple pieces and to quote Bill Highland, at this point, I think would be a very valuable piece. Mr. Highland's been a very valuable resource in this journey and his, his statement has been, "Charles, we need to make sure this isn't a one-night-stand." That the efforts that we put forth, the things that we're going to do with our school kids needs to have a momentum, hopefully, that will encourage teachers, that will work within the framework of the curriculum and ultimately help young people to better understand and be excited about their community, to develop a pride about being a St. Bernardian because the world changed right here. So, what will, what will be taking place? There's a number of activities. First of all, for all of you on the Wednesday, Wednesday, January 7th, we will have a welcome dinner that's going to take place at Dockville. It's free. The ladies that are involved that, that helped to create the wonderful event that took place at Dockville on Saturday, the tour of homes ladies are coming together to cook so that we can welcome as many of the reenactors who will be in our community. Please understand at this point, they're close to Charlene, 1,400 people that, that are registered, coming from all over the world to come participate in the Battle of New Orleans here in our community. And so, it's really important that you guys put that on your calendar, to be there to, to say thank you to people who are coming on their expense to celebrate our event. It's, it's truly a wonderful thing. So, that's Wednesday. The, the real big events that involve our community will truly begin on Friday. On Friday, in compliments of tourism, you have both a book as well as a variety of little things and there is a really nice calendar of events. Here we go. Katie, you want to help? And on, we have our own vanna white, ladies and gentlemen.
Much more important though, who's, she's head of our tourist.
Exactly, exactly. And she's going to speak to you all in just a minute about this.
She's also a fine graduate of Chalmette High School.
Yes, she is.
A wonderful volleyball player in high school.
Oh, that's important.
Little did she know that was preparation to leap tall, tall obstacles at a single bone that she's had to deal with. On Friday, we have a number of things that are going to take place. First of all, the anniversary is Thursday, the 8th. That's the actual 200th anniversary. On Friday will be a variety of school-centered events that take place. We're looking at this little bitty one-page rack card is what we're looking at at the moment. And there's opportunity for field trips in, in a number of areas. There will be children going to the battlefield and those students can participate in just kind of a, a basic observation, walk-around look, or they can do something that's called the Battle of New Orleans University, which is sort of a hands-on mini-encounter type of experience that will be available to students. And at this point, we have students from Chalmette Elementary and from Goché who are registered to participate in that piece. Then, also, there will be a, an event that will take place through Our Lady of Prom Soccer. Father Campo is organizing a program, bringing together both students from prom soccer school as well as, an invitation's been extended to Chalmette High School for band, chorus, ROTC members and, and you folks and Ms. Votche to please participate in that event. The Archbishop is coming and is going to do the rosary at the church and whether permitting, there'll be a procession from the church to the Dela Ron Oaks and at the Oaks, there will be kind of an inter-denominational experience and, and I guess, real commemorative experience because that's where the dead were brought. That's where the wounded came and literally died in many instances. So, it's really sacred ground in a lot of ways. So, there will be a, a very important event there. And then, if you're familiar with what was the Woodlands subdivision, the area directly in back of Walmart, and Ms. Strain is going to come and talk about that piece of the event because that's what involves the, the many reenactors. There will be an amazing opportunity for our students to go and see men and women dressed in period costume, period soldier costume, women dresses, men, you know, who wore tailors, cooks, bakers, all those kinds of people are going to be here bringing that kind of thing to life. Ms. Strain, why don't you come share? Matter of fact, to brag about Ms. Strain, she and her husband and, and children are a very small group of family that are in St. Bernard that have continually participated as reenactors.
Right. And Ms. Strain is also our music teacher at Chalmette Elementary.
That is correct, yes. Hello, everyone. I am, I'm here to talk a little bit about what's going on at our new, the reenactment park, which is located in the former Woodlands subdivision immediately behind Walmart. That is where a majority of visitors to St. Bernard Parish are going to be housed during this event. Some will be camping there, some are traveling back and forth from hotels if they don't want the full experience. We, we have registered on the website and I'm keeping track because my husband is an active reenactor and we, he, that's one of his hobbies that our family has gone along with. And they have registered 1,400 people to visit here and that includes people representing Americans, British, but also a variety of what we call settlers, which are tradespeople who will be offering authentic reenactment things as well as sale items for the, the casual person who has an interest in historical reenactment. So, that, that's kind of a new aspect. The park itself will be, is, it's very large. They have a full complement sided for American reenactors that is probably a quarter mile down and as you go across, the British encampment is equally as long, including a very large battlefield. And the reason that they're, they're doing a separate site from the park service is because they really wanted to expand the live-action battle reenactment that they were doing and that's, the park service has some policies they have to follow, follow through the federal government that prohibits that. So, by going off, off of a federal site, they can expand what they're doing and the live action, the things that people come and go, "Ooh, they're shooting the guns and they're shooting the cannon." They have many of these planned throughout the day for our students on Friday, Friday evening open to the public, Saturday and also Sunday morning. They're going to have, you'll get to see more people involved. We have people from, from my count, firsthand knowledge, seven different countries traveling as well as from the U.S. Our local militia, which of course was French-speaking, is, is hosting a group of people from France coming in who will be hanging out with us at the camp and we, you know, we're, we're in contact with people from Canada and Britain and Australia and countries in Europe who are, they're, they can't wait to come. So, we're hoping that they get a good sense of not only the New Orleans area, but what this area has grown into, that used to be the outskirts of New Orleans, but it's now our parish here. So, we're going to have lots of people visiting us and, you know, we're hoping that through our students going to visit that site, that they will come back and visit with their families and friends. And we can make this an annual event instead of a big-time thing that won't happen for another hundred years. You know? Thank you.
Perfect segue. Back now to Chalmette High School. Those of you who have been to the Cultural Arts Building know that we have a Founder's Room and have maybe wondered exactly the concept. The concept from that, of that room from its origin was to begin to bring to life the amazing and complex New Orleans history. St. Bernard's history and New Orleans history really are one. You're, you're sitting in New Orleans in 1815. New Orleans extended all the way to the Poitras Junction. That was the, that was the point in which Governor Bernardo de Galvez and the French and the Spanish governments began to move and make decisions and in fact, the Isleños were brought in to help defend that part of the, of this land because people knew it was just a matter of time that the British would be coming. Well, in our Founder's Room, we have placed a true and accurate historic interpretive example of Chalmette's plantation, the colors, the proportion, the window formation, the shutters, all of those things are very accurate for our students to be able to see, not just hear it, but see it. The doors, the windows will open and inside those windows will be interpretive panels bringing Chalmette the man to life so that our students will, over time, begin to understand and begin to make the connections. Potentially, many of you are connected to those founders of this community. We have people from many different walks of life who will be represented in portraits within the Founder's Room, some of which, ladies and gentlemen, I'm very proud to tell you, there, there is no other replica other than what will be in our building. Does that tell you anything? There are no other replicas of this. That's the level of support we've received from some very significant individuals as well as Historic New Orleans Collection and Louisiana State Museum. So, that will be open and will continue throughout at least April when we do a big conclusion program, which will talk about what that's going to mean, hopefully, in the Celebrate St. Bernard program. And now to that, ladies and gentlemen, the lady who's helping to make all of these things bubble and cook beyond what we're doing in the school, Ms. Katie, who has just been wonderful in this whole journey. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you. You mentioned cook. I'll leave that to my husband. Thank you for inviting me here tonight, Ms. Votche. I appreciate that. The St. Bernard Parish Office of Tourism, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Katie Tomasi. I'm the Tourism Director for St. Bernard Parish. The St. Bernard Parish Office of Tourism, what we do, our role in the Battle of New Orleans is not only to promote and advertise the events that are going on, we set up the Welcome Center in the Government Complex. And with Charles's vision, he has helped us to not only be in the lobby of the complex, we're also going to be set up in the council chambers as well. We're going to have the tourism video playing. We're also going to have the National Park Service's video playing because you won't be able to see that video when you go to the park. So, we're going to show it in the council chambers. All of the parking, you must park at the Government Complex and then we will shuttle all the visitors over to the National Park Service. There will also be shuttle service available going over to the Woodlands back by the Living History Foundation. And what I think is really great, thank goodness I had last year because, you know, when I started, I was like, ooh, 200th anniversary, so I kind of got a year onto my belt and thanks to Charles, the Chalmette High students, the ambassadors, they help greet all these tourists that are coming to St. Bernard Parish. They get on a school bus, they speak over a loudspeaker, they talk about major facts about the Battle of New Orleans, so it was really interesting. They get off the bus, they help send you to a National Park Ranger and then they're there waiting for the tourists when they go back on the bus. And they also have more, they speak over the loudspeaker about other events and people's experience from leaving the park. And I'm really excited having not only the events going on at the National Park, but at the Living History Foundation site because it'll complement each other and I'm hoping it'll draw more visitors coming into St. Bernard Parish. So, we've been working really hard with that. We're going to have some new banners going up, so if you see me the next few days walking down Judge Perez and St. Bernard Highway, I will be marking light poles so that the parish can hang, hang our banners. There'll be 120 banners for the Battle of New Orleans. There'll be the Freeman of Coller. There'll also be a British soldier, an American soldier, a pirate, and Charles, am I missing someone? I think that's, oh, General Packenham and Andrew Jackson, the two most important ones. So, we have that going on and also at the bags you see, I have similar bags for all the, the teachers in St. Bernard Parish. We're going to do student, I mean pencils for the students and we also just ordered the Star Spangled Banner Flags, which is the 15-star flag that we're going to fly at all Government Buildings, all school buildings, wherever there's an entrance to the parish with a flagpole on Paris Road and on St. Bernard Highway, which I'm hoping people will look and say, "Why is that only 15 stars?" So, I'm hoping that'll be an educational learning experience for not only our students but for our community as well, trying to raise awareness for the Battle of New Orleans. But if you have any other questions or anything, you can, please feel free to contact me. We have a website, visit stbonard.com. Also, we have, we had a local calendar of just events going on in St. Bernard Parish, which I have to print some more and thank goodness I held off because Mitch Goday is now going to have Prospect 3 going on and it's going to be an art show based on the Battle of New Orleans. And Nunez is also going to have the symposium going on as well. So, we have some things that we're adding to that calendar of events. So, once I get those printed, I'll bring some over to the school board and I'm going to put some out at all different locations, you know, throughout the parish. And anytime y'all want to stop by the Welcome Center on Acoch Street, please feel free to stop by and visit us.
You want to mention about Henson Moore bringing us?
Yes, and, and our chairman, I am also on the Bicentennial Commission and Chairman Henson Moore presented on Monday to Ms. Votche, the Battle of New Orleans Curriculum that is going to be implemented in the school systems, the public and private throughout the state of Louisiana. So, that's really exciting as well. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Kassar.
I guess maybe one last thing. This little, again, this little picture, you say sometimes a picture's worth a thousand words. If you see the entirety of this picture, which the original is held at Noma, as the picture would extend, which we'll have a version of, Chalmette's plantation is right here and you can see the actual rubble from the explosion. This is La Clots, this is a really famous piece done by a military artist. So, you guys, as the picture comes together, it's going to be really great for our kids to see.
And we also have, Terrence Osborne did a painting for the Battle of New Orleans and it's the reconnaissance and force battle and those are for sale if anybody would like to buy one. It's really beautiful. I'm hoping Charles and I can get together and possibly put the original or the G clay or something in the Founder's Room so that people will be able to, you know, see it when they come and visit the Chalmette plantation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Mr. Kassar, Ms. Strain, thank you so much for giving this presentation. It ought to be a great, great one, 200 years of history right here in St. Bernard Parish on the plains of Chalmette where the battle was fought, right?
Right. And over at the Living History Park, there are going to be five battle reenactments. There'll be one on Friday night, which is free and open to the public. There'll be three on Saturday. There's still, the times are still being determined. I'm being told on Friday night, it'll be at 7:00 and it'll be three times on Saturday and then the actual closing will be on Sunday with the Battle of New Orleans. And the Welcome Center will be open in the Government Complex all of those days, so please stop by. We have our visitor registry that I encourage all people to sign so we can kind of get an idea about how many people came and visited St. Bernard Parish and see what kind of economic impact it'll bring. And I'm hoping with both the new parks that we'll have, it'll truly be something positive for our community and for our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from board members, or Superintendent? Here are none, we'll move the agenda. Thank you again for being with us. Appreciate the information. Item six, motion to incorporate the December 2014 General Committee Report into the minutes of the December regular monthly meeting. I need a motion and a second. Motion by Dr. Lewis, second by Mr. Makoshia. Any questions or comments about the minutes? Here are none. Vote your machines.
Mr. Campbell?
Vote you.
Motion passes 10-0.
Item seven, presentation of personnel changes for December 2014. Superintendent Votche?
As you can see, there are three additions from the committee meeting last week. Ms. Maggie Rousell will be at Chalmette Elementary School. That's one of our graduates coming back. And Ms. Caitlin Bruce, who had taught with us, left for a while, now she's back and she's very good at that point. So, if anybody has any questions?
Any questions? Here are none. We move the agenda to automate. Yes. Yes, Mr. DeFatta.
While we're on personnel, I'll just take a moment. I wanted to congratulate our Teachers of the Year. Got a little paper, a little bit, and congratulations to all three Teachers of the Year. Want to especially congratulate Ms. Abity. Michelle, I taught Michelle when she was little, she went to school with my son, so I know Michelle for a very long time. And also, I see Mr. Chris Dear has followed in his mother's footsteps, is a wonderful social studies teacher, Ms. Lynn Dear. And I have to say, I'm going to embarrass Chris just a tiny bit. I know Chris, even before he was in diapers, when he was a little bitty baby, know how he, I did not teach him, but I did teach his sister and he was always there. And I can see from that recognition that the last time I taught him in class, let's see, Mr. Henderson was across let's see, Mr. Henderson was, uh, across the hall from me as I was subbing at Andrew Jackson.
Okay.
And, um, I had to go and shake Chris and tell him to wake up in math class, so I wouldn't have to go tell his mother. But I see that he stayed awake, obviously, um, through all of his college classes, and he's done an excellent job in the teaching. And I don't know if y'all had covered this, I'm sorry I was late, we were coming in from out of town, but I did want to congratulate all three of the winners, but especially those two, since I know them since they were little bitty children. Very proud of you all.
And Ms. Jessica Janik is the high school one.
And Ms. Janik, yes, yes. Also, Ms. Janik, congratulations to Ms. Janik. As far as I know, no overlap.
No connection?
No connection on that one, sorry. Not at least when she was a little bitty one. But congratulations to Ms. Janik too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fatah.
Doctor Prin?
Yes, I'm Mr. Warner.
Yeah, I just, um, noticed too, we had a couple of bus drivers resign, and I noticed we've been running some ads in the newspaper, I just wanna put it out there that we are looking for bus drivers, so actively looking for bus drivers.
Very actively looking.
So if you know anybody that wants to be a bus driver, please get in touch with the Personnel Department here at the school board.
And I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Warner, because we're starting, even if the person does not have the CDL license, the, uh, we will train them. Doctor Gonzalez is starting a class of people to help them, uh, study for the written exam to pass the CDL, and then also to provide the experience, um, in driving the bus and teaching them to do so. Our people are certified to be trainers, and Doctor Gonzalez is certified to be a trainer of trainers. So we have been trying to train our own, um, the, and, and you hate to say this, but these people are leaving to take jobs in, um, uh, well, one in St. Tammany, one in St. Bernard, in the public transit system, driving buses for governmental bodies, which is a year-round job, which, you know, ours is not.
Yeah, more.
So they're leaving for, um, I guess, more lucrative opportunities. But we're sorry to see them go, but anyone who is interested in the community in driving a bus, we will provide the training. Just come to the Personnel Office, fill out the application, go through that process, and, um, hopefully, we can grow some of our own bus drivers, as we do our own teachers.
Thank you, Superintendent Vouchey.
Thank you very much. Anyone else has anything to comment on the personnel changes and personnel opportunities? Uh, here, here are none, let's move to the next item on the agenda. Uh, there was no recommendation for item eight, so we need a motion to adopt the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen calendar. So if we get a report from the, uh, votes by the Teachers Group, what they recommended, Ms. Larson?
Hi, good evening. Uh, if you will look at the information provided to you, it is the same rundown that I provided to you on last Tuesday. However, on the last page, we do have the votes of the employees in, and as you can see, option one.
Old woman.
One overwhelming, uh, five hundred plus of our employees wanted, uh, us to adopt or urging us to adopt option one. So we would like to recommend from the administration that the board consider adopting option one for the school calendar for next year.
Doctor Craft also moved that we, um, upon the recommendation of the administration and upon the recommendation of the teachers' vote, that we approve option one.
Option one. We got a, uh, motion, uh, second by Mr. England. Any questions before we go to a vote? We thank you for that information. Here are no comments or no questions, vote your machines.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, Ms. Larson.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the administration's request for our agent of record to solicit proposals for property insurance, and there was a recommendation by the committee. Uh, motion by Ms. De Fatah, second by Mr. Campbell. Uh, any questions relative to this, this item? Here are none, vote your machines for item nine.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay. Agenda item ten, motion to approve the proposal from Spitz Incorporated to purchase materials from its catalog, and there was a recommendation by the committee. Doctor Lewis motion, second by Mr. Warner. Any questions of this? Here are none, vote your machine.
Motion passes ten zero.
Agenda item eleven, motion to approve the bid tabulation for paper, cleaning, and custodial supplies, and there was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Ms. Dyers, second by Ms. Asseveda. Any questions, any comments relative to agenda item eleven? Here are none, vote your machines.
Motion passes ten zero.
Item twelve, motion to authorize the superintendent to execute any and all agreements allowing access to inspection, inspection of school board properties, and there was a recommendation by the committee. Mr. Campbell, a second, uh, Mr. England made the motion. Okay? Any question, comments regarding this? Here are none, vote your machines. Sub, superintendent, you have the operation from the board.
Motion passes nine four with one abstention.
Okay. Uh, we have a while, and we, uh, get items, if you have one in mind now, to be placed on the next committee meeting. Mr. Warner suggested that we recognize the people that was involved in the sports this past semester, athletics, et cetera. Mr. Warner, you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Doctor Craft. I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate all of the participants in the fall sports as we close this season, take a moment, congratulate the students, high school and middle school, uh, the athletes, the performers, the trainers, volunteers, coaches, teachers, and parents on a job well done. Some of the highlights, if you don't mind, take a moment?
Go ahead.
Football team went four and one in district. We had seven members on, uh, first-team all district, including, uh, Jalen Scott was a defensive MVP. And so, uh, also, the kicker, Juan Esperaza, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly.
That's close enough.
He was the, uh, first-team special teams all district, eight-five A. Volleyball, we had nineteen wins. Kelly Pleasure racked up her six-hundredth win this year. Um, let me move on to swimming. Swimming, Mandy Newton swam in the Hundred Butterfly and Hundred Freestyle Event. She's the first girl in Chalmette High history to qualify as an individual event for the state. Also, Chalmette, I mean, uh, Trist won the volleyball title for middle school, and, uh, Trist and, I can't read my hand right now, AJ split. They, they both are the co-winners of the football championship for the middle schools. I just wanted to pass that along. Also, uh, the Sarah Nunes was the homecoming queen this year, so just wanted to pass on that information. Thank you, Doctor Craft.
All right. Thank you.
And I think, Doctor Warner, you've asked for an item on the agenda for next month, if you wanna read that.
January, right, yes. So let's put that on, recognize these young people.
Our anti-bullying.
Yeah, I'd like to just get an update from, uh, Mr. Powell on our anti-bullying program, if I could.
Okay.
Yeah, anyone has any other votes? Had? Okay, you have time to do that before the meeting in January, the committee meeting. At, uh, at this time, we're gonna recognize, uh, Board Member Lynette De Fatah. Ms. De Fatah is leaving after two thousand to two thousand fourteen, fourteen years of service and dedicated commitment to our students of St. Bernard Parish. She's been a, a capable and able board member, and she's worked well with the team, school board, school board, uh, St. Bernard, so we appreciate all of her efforts and all of her commitment to the, uh, school board. And, uh, we're gonna ask her to come around and be congratulated, uh, for this service from each board member. And we do have a little plaque for you to remember, Spy, in case you tend to forget what a great group we are. And I'm gonna read that at this time, before you come around to receive your plaque.
Okay.
Uh, presented to Ms. Lynette De Fatah in tribute to her dedicated service to the students of St. Bernard Parish, as a member of the St. Bernard Parish School Board for fourteen years, two thousand to two thousand fourteen, at the end of this year. And, uh, by, and we, uh, present this by the members of the St. Bernard Parish School Board on this date, and also from the administration and everyone that you've worked with for, uh, during, during this fourteen years. Thank you so much for your service there, Ms. De Fatah.
Well, thank you, Doctor Craft.[1480.13][1480.13](Applause). If I'm gonna say something first, and then I'll...
You can go ahead. Go right ahead. You got the floor.
Technically, it's thirteen years and two months, but, okay, we'll round up.
We'll round up. We always round up.
We always round up, even though it's not point five, we'll round up. But, um, you know, I've worked with and taught children for over twenty-five years. It's pretty much the only thing that I know. And so when I retired from my first teaching job, which was my dancing school, one of my parents, and I mentioned her earlier, um, well, many of my parents said this, but one in particular, Ms. Lynn Dear, was one of my parents, and she said, "Lynette, what are you gonna do? You're so good with children. What are you gonna do?" And I said, "Well, Lynn, I'm gonna retire," I thought.
We don't believe that.
She says, "Well, you know, there's this open seat on the school board."[1537.63][1537.63](Laughter). So I have to blame it all on Ms. Dear, I guess. Um, and I thought about it, discussed it with my husband, and came to a little interview here, and attended the meetings and watched the meetings for about a year, and then decided, you know, this might be a good spot to come, especially after about three, four months when I was bored and being retired, it didn't work well for me. Um, but I've enjoyed my time here. I think that our group of school board members have always worked together well. We've always put the interest of the students first, and our teachers, and, um, I think we've done some good things for the parish. So.
Yeah.[1586.83][1586.83](Applause).
And while, while you're doing that, Ms. De Fatah, I just wanna personally thank you. You've been an excellent board member, and you always have put the interests of the children first. So we wanna thank you for your service from all of our teachers and children in our school community. So, thank you. I know, it's kinda rough to go across this, huh?
I mean, you can spank it, buddy. Look at that.
We tried.
If anything wrong, that's why we're doing.
I know. Y'all took yours down. Take yours down.
I'm trying, I'm standing on my toes.
That's right. You're not that, you're not, you're not that tall to reach that far.
Boy, what a pair, point shoes, hand and out.
(Laughter).
Oh, yeah, that won't ever do you on my paper anymore. You just don't know. And I have to put up and act like it is.
That's right.[1652.13][1652.13](Laughter). And he did it on purpose, too.
Above and beyond the call of duty, that's all.
I'm telling you. I'm telling you.
Okay. Uh, we don't have any superintendent's recommendations there?
Uh, just, just that we are winding up, and of course, testing at the high school. Uh, we're getting ready for exams on Thursday and Friday.
Oh, my goodness.
But there are many, um, performances for, from our children, still Christmas performances to enjoy for the rest of the week. And then, again, as we said in the prayer, we wish everyone a very happy holiday season, a very Merry Christmas, and please, everyone be safe out there, 'cause we want all of us to return in the new year, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Superintendent Vouchey. We all wish you a Merry Christmas and a safe, safe one in this new year coming up, twenty fifteen, that we all have a safe one, a prosperous, and one that will be challenging, 'cause there are always challenges ahead. And as a school board, we will face those challenges for the benefit and the future of our students. Thank you so much. We need a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Uh, we do have a second. Okay, Ms. Asseveda, second. All in favor of adjournance, say aye.
Aye.
Please stand adjourned. Have a good one. Don't forget to party.